Everyone, sorry, I didn't mean to scare you. I guess I should have gave a little warning. Good evening, it is January 21st. I'm sorry, December 21st, oh man, sorry. I don't know where I'm going. Sorry, excuse me, I'm trying to get to 2024 already, I'm sorry. Yes, alright, let's start over. Good evening, everyone, it is Thursday, December 21st, 2023, it is 6 o'clock, and we are starting our Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Alright, so, we have citizen comments. We don't have anyone here, but we have someone that sent something in. It is from Morris and Diana Mock, Reverend Trust, 1302 Highway 95, Texas. Let's see, they are in favor of the first item on the agenda tonight, which is Item 3A. They just said that they were told that the purpose proposed lot was, will be used for a cemetery lot.
3B.
3B. Oh, sorry, thank you. That's the minutes, let me get my stuff together, y'all. 3B, sorry, thank you. I just looked at it, yes, it's 3C, Farm Lot 67. Alright. Okay, Item 3A, Consider Action to Approve Meeting Minutes From October 5th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
I have looked over the minutes and make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you, this shows unanimous for the meeting. The motion was made by Gary, and the second by Judah. Okay, now, on to Item 3B, Consider Action to Appoint a Planning and Zoning Commission Member as its representative of the Historic Landmark Commission. Ms. Kennedy?
Alright, good evening, Commissioners, thank y'all for being here right before Christmas. So, as we talked about last meeting, HLC requires a P&amp;Z rep there, and we weren't able to make an action item because it wasn't on the agenda, so we have that here for y'all today. Gary Moss had volunteered last time, does that still stand? Alright, so we'll just need a motion to appoint you for the rep.
I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Moss, but apologies for cutting.
Sorry, I'm, look, I'm, we haven't done this in like a couple months, and I'm so off. Residents, you let me slip too, man, we did not call roll, I'm sitting here looking down, and we did not call roll.
Yeah, PJ, she actually reminded me, but I let it go past.
No, man, please keep me on point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Judah Ross?
Here.
Ash, oh, Ashley, no. David Barrow?
Here.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Gary Schiff. Jordan Scott?
Here.
Patrice Parsons?
Here.
Alright, we have six Commissioners, so we have enough for a quorum. Alright, back to you, Kenny. Sorry, Citizens of Bastrop, I'm a little off tonight, I'll get it together.
Right before the holidays, we're all a little rusty right now.
Continuing that, I will make a motion to approve Commissioner Moss as the representative.
Second. And thank you very much, Mr. Moss, for doing so.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, I know Pete really appreciates that. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to vote on this, correct? Or is it just a unanimous, we need to vote, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, correct. Alright, can you call roll, please?
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
Yes.
Ashley? David Barrow?
Yes.
Gary Moss? Jordan Scott?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Alright, we have five yeses to one no, the motion passes unanimous.
Not unanimous.
Huh?
We had one no, so it's not unanimous.
Oh, sorry, sorry, five to one, not unanimous.
It does still pass.
Still passes.
Alright, so that brings us to 3C.
Okay, we're going. Item 3C, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve the Request for a Zoning Concept Scheme for P4 Mix to PCS Civic Space for the area described as 1.08 acres of land on the Farm Lot 67 East of Main Street located at northeast corner of State Highway 95 and Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop. Ms. Kennedy?
Alright, so, this right here in front of y'all is the zoning concept scheme for the property that was recently purchased by the city. At that top lot, see if I can get this, this top lot up here had a house on it that was falling down, it was a danger, and that has now been remedied by the city, it's no longer a danger. And this zoning concept scheme is to make both of these two lots, the two lots highlighted in red, this thing isn't working, zoned, civic space. The zoning will match what is zoned around it for the public, the publicly owned property. The only, there is one lot in between the two, this, it's low, it's colored in red, that one is a privately owned lot, but the rest around that are highlighted are city owned space, and the blue that you see is civic space, so it will match its area. And this could potentially down the line be used for expanding the cemetery, I don't believe that has been decided at this point, but currently we're just doing the zoning concept scheme to make those two lots civic space.
Is there any other parts around the cemetery area that the city is looking to acquire?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay.
What is, what is allowed in civic space zoned area? Is it only?
Open space areas, public spaces, parks, recreation, all of those kind of things, as well as cemeteries.
Is there any plan to have it as a park until it's necessary to be used as a cemetery?
Actually, not sure. Sorry.
Hello, Sylvie Correia, City Manager, I'm not sure how much you're aware of what's going on at the cemetery, but we have some massive cemetery renovations going on with some additional, I think they were down to less than 40 spaces available. So, there is an expansion toward the rear, and should any additional be needed, that is, that area toward the front, plus just a protection and a beautification of the cemetery is all we have planned at this particular point in time. The blue house has been demolished.
Did you have a question?
And I'm assuming the city is responsible for payment of any kind of beautification or any of that kind of stuff of the cemetery?
Yes, yeah, it's city owned property.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Ms. PJ?
Ishmael?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Gary, Jordan Scott?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Alright, let the record show that we voted unanimous for this one, thank you. Okay, moving on to Item 3D, Consider Action to Approve Valverde Section 1, Phase 1 and 2, Final Plat Being 47.745 Acres Out of the Nancy Blakey Survey Abstract Number 98 Located West of FM 969 Within the City of Bastrop, Texas, As Shown in Attachment 1. Ms. Kennedy?
Alright, so this is the final plat, the preliminary plat has been seen before y'all previously, this is the final plat for Phase 1 and, Phase 1, Section 1 and 2, or sorry, Section 1, Phase 1 and 2. And so you can see the location here, so this site, it's 47-ish acres, and it will be the first of the residential units that will be developed. 19 acres will go towards residential lots, 15 or so acres will be right of way, two for open space, and then a 10 for open space slash drainage. And so, here, here you can see the, the final plat, these, these four corners put together, in your packets, they're separated, but you can see them kind of here as one piece. So there will be 12 streets and seven alleys created with this plat. Street A, right here, will be the main access off of 969, and then Street E will be the main connector with the rest of the subdivision. There will be several interior streets and alleys, and the majority of these lots will be alley loaded instead of, they won't have street frontage, they'll have alley frontage. Water will be served by the city, the developer is planning on doing a 24-inch line extension from the existing water tank on the south side of 71. They will also be constructing new water mains to provide service to the residential lots. Wastewater will be by the city as well via lift, via new lift station and line extensions along 969. And then the drainage patterns generally, generally flow north to south, sorry, south to north, and their proposing surface and underground drainage that will convey storm water to the two detention ponds on site. The existing drainage patterns will be remained, and the existing peak flow rates will not be increased with this plat. Here you can see the Concessual Land Use Plan that was approved, and the section that we're talking about is this top right-hand corner, with the residential lots included as allowed uses. And, let's see, and this plat follows all standards adopted by the Veridian or the Valverde Development Agreement.
So I just have a clarification question. Under 212.010, I think it's number three, it says a bond required, are they, are the developers asking for a bond, meaning they get potential revenue, or is the city helping pay for this? That would be my concern, if the city's having to pay for any of this.
So, before a plat can be recorded, one of two things has to happen, the infrastructure has to be built, or they put up a bond for the cost of construction, 115% of the cost of construction. And so to move the plat along, they have elected to put up a bond. We are actually still in negotiations with this developer as to where the wastewater, the final wastewater design is going to be. At one point, it was going to go down 71 and follow the Chick-fil-A path down that way. That line has very little capacity left in it, so this line will probably more than likely head down 969 and make the connection at Bear Hunter. So that's why there's a bond in place.
Gotcha. And this is within city limits currently?
Yes, we annexed 399 acres about four, five months ago, as part of the development agreement, so they would meet city standards. This plat does not meet county standards, as the county would prefer ditch and culvert sections instead of underground drainage. So they went ahead and moved forward with their annexation of 399. That's only half of the parcel, that's probably 40% of the parcel. This parcel at full buildout has about 1,600 living unit equivalents.
And is the 40% adjacent to 969, and everything else is on the west side of it that hasn't been annexed yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Most of that, and this is only Phase 1 and 2, there are, oh gosh, multiple, multiple phases, very similar to the colony. The city just finished the acquisition of Vista Puente, which is this road here, which will then ultimately connect down into the subdivision down here, and that's 21, and then here's 969 and out through 71. So, we're trying to create multiple connection points for outs, so that 969 isn't further congested.
Is that FM 20 that it's connecting to?
Correct.
At the top there, two, right there, yeah, that's 20. And I know some, some of y'all weren't around whenever this was brought to the commission last year, but there is also going to be, if I'm correct, at the bottom, that road goes all the way down and connects to that, there is a small little community on the, I guess you can call it the north end of 21, and then it's a little road, so that road will connect there, I don't even know the name of it, Judah, to be honest with you, but there are going to be multiple outlets, I guess, if you will. But yes, that, that, if I can ask, do we know when those other phases are going to kick in? Because I do know that it's going to continue to go down.
It is very dependent on us, we cannot build that wastewater treatment plant fast enough. And before you get wastewater, you need water. Our wells will start producing in May, first one will come online in May, and then we expect to have the rest of the wells active in January of 2025. So you can't flush without water.
Right.
So, it really is contingent upon the city, and we're trying to, I don't want to say slow the development, but at least phase it. I have worked in a city where there is no more room in the wastewater treatment lines, and believe you me, it is not fun when it rains.
Oh, yeah.
We're trying to avoid that.
Right, alright, I completely understand, being in that field.
I have one question. Being, living in Pecan Park and knowing how hard it is to get in and out of my subdivision as it has expanded, and being concerned about fire, how do we all get out of there if the subdivision catches fire? How, how quickly will those roads be expanded so that people can get in and out of there if there's a problem? Will it, will it keep up with the development of the project?
Yes. So Vista Puente, the reason the project is a little bit off schedule is because Vista Puente was just recently legally untangled, we'll put it that way. And we had to go through some hoops to get Vista Puente, which is critical for the subdivision to have the other outlets. I would tell you that this is a Lennar subdivision. Some of this is DR Horton, yes, DR Horton, there is a Lennar component up there, they, they are promising, 10 homes a week easily. So it, it will go up very quickly.
So what are we, are we doing anything to work with TechDOT as far as that impact and maybe some improvements to that highway?
Yes, TechDOT has a study right now with 969, the county just finished its draft transportation plan. 969 had been called out to be a MOD 4, which is a four lane, it is now proposed to be a six lane, or at least the discussion is, to be a six lane highway.
Okay, so, right on time with Pete's question, and what we're talking about, and Chief, Andreas walking in, it's going to be a lot of people, right, added on, and I know there's a lot of efforts being put forth in increasing staff, but this is kind of, are we looking at another station, more people, or what are we going to do for that? I mean, because it is, it's a lot of houses, it's surrounded by a heavily wooded area, I mean, not to beat that dead horse, but that's one that needs to continue to be made aware of.
This one was previously in a different emergency services district, it is EST 1. With the annexation, it will come on to city proper, and then we'll look at additional staffing at that particular point in time. I will say, our previous development agreements really only concern themselves with water and wastewater, and didn't really concern themselves with being able to have the ability to be strategic and deal with police and fire and all of the other necessary items that deal with running a city. So when ironwood comes before you, you'll see those type of different requirements in those development agreements. This one is annexation, so this is property tax to the city that will be used for addressing those resource needs.
And, and I'm sure y'all have it taken care of, but just another thing, as far as with those people and the houses, are we ensuring that we have a good amount of pressure going to those homes for water usage and things of that nature?
So on this site, over to the west, will be proposed, there's an elevated storage tank proposed there. It works in conjunction with the storage tank, the ground storage tank we have at Bob Bryant. Were hindered a little bit by Bob Bryant because of deed restrictions we were trying to work through, because when the land was deeded, it listed specific reasons and excluded specific reasons in certain areas. The Bryant tank needs work, you see it in the water quality around the area. The elevated storage tank that should go here, this is one of the highest areas in the city, the elevated storage tank here would provide redundancy for the entire city, and all of our other tanks and ground storage tanks would be contingency tanks. So it is super, super, super critical. This also aligns with our discussions with Aqua and purchase of territory, so.
Thank you.
I wish I could tell you, it was just a little bit.
One last question. I did actually read these materials before I got here tonight, but I can't remember.
That's okay.
Is this strictly single-family homes?
No, well, what's before you will be a multi, a single family with a little bit of mixed use, I don't believe you're going to see the mixed use until a future agenda item, because the mixed use will be in this segment. Their development agreement calls for a commercial segment.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, no other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second.
Who was the second?
David.
Judah?
He's trying to get home.
Alright.
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Jordan Scott?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Let the record show, we voted unanimous. Alright, on to Item 3E, Consider Action to Approve Lover's Lane Preliminary Plat Being 25.01 Acres Situated in Stephen F. Austin Survey Abstract Number 2 Located West of Lover's Lane and South of Margie's Way, Bastrop, Texas, As Shown in, As Shown in Attachment 1. Ms. Kennedy?
Alright, thank you all again. And so this right here, we have a preliminary plat that's coming before y'all, it's currently zoned P2, and so it's located south of Highway 71 at the corner of Lover's Lane and Margie, Margie Way. They're proposing to subdivide this lot to obtain eight one-half acre lots, the remainder will be left undeveloped currently. With this, with this plat, the, the rest of the parcel is waiting on utilities. So the developer is moving forward with these eight lots in hopes to recoup some costs so that they can wait for the utilities to be developed, and then the city, the city utilities to be extended. So there will be right-of-way dedication for future extension of Lover's Lane, water will be provided by Bastrop County WCID Number 2, and wastewater will be septic. For drainage, the pre- and post-development boundaries are going, are proposed to remain the same, and the existing drainage pattern with the basin runoff will continue to flow east to Lover's Lane from, from each of the lots. And so this right here is their preliminary plat that they're, that they're proposing, off to the right-hand side is where they are going to do the eight half-acre lots, and then this will be the remainder area for future development once, once utilities are there.
Was the city owned land properly?
Previously, yes, yes, it was purchased from the city.
I know that area is very close to 100-year floodplain, if not in it, what are we?
The portion of the, the property that's in the floodplain is this right down here, that's, that's the only portion that's in the floodplain.
Gotcha, okay.
And so this also will be in front of the movie studio, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How much of their property are they dedicating to the parks?
I don't think they currently have any dedication for parks, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, has there been any conversation for that?
Not sure.
Right.
So it is required in the ordinance, we know that the, the developer has proposed a townhome development here, and so that exaction will happen at that time, whether they're going to put in a public park or playscape or play space here, or whether they're going to contribute dollars to the city's park fund.
I think it'd be a good idea for them to put something over there, right? Just give that neighborhood something to do, alleviate some of that traffic coming into town.
Is this in Tahitian Village?
It's, it's not a part of Tahitian Village, but it is right next door.
What is it currently?
Vacant.
Just a vacant lot?
Yeah, it's currently vacant.
Not used for anything?
Currently, no.
And are we worried about any sort of flora, fauna, anything endangered?
It used to be the, the Little League football practice field? That's what was on it before, so.
With no lighting, just, okay, cool.
I have a question. Seems like, if I understand this correctly, these are going to be, this is going to be property that's going to be dedicated to vehicles that are more, that are larger than regular cars, is that correct?
What, like you're talking for the road, or?
Trucks bringing products that are, you know, coming in and out of larger vehicles, is that not, this, what, what is this going to be used for, do we know?
They're, they will be houses.
Houses?
Yeah.
Yes, it's got to be houses, but, but there is, there is the, the thing of the traffic, right? We've already discussed with the movie theater going there, the traffic impact there, but I mean, it could potentially be, you know, 100 extra vehicles in this neighborhood, right? And it's already a headache, and I'm sure there's discussions, right? But again, you know, for our sake and even those listening, right? What efforts are, are being put forth in having a healthy relationship to get the roads and safely for people to get in and out of there?
So I know currently there is right-of-way dedication for Lover's Lane, and that is a county road, as, as for the rest, you, are you, sorry?
So you guys just approved your transportation impact fee, you approved 65%, council approved that on first reading, your 65% recommendation is the first phase, council opted for the maximum with a, I believe a two-year grace period, so at building permit, there will be an exaction. If you, if you recall, the movie studio is up in this area, and we eliminated their ability to access their property off of Margie's Way. Their access is up further on Lover's Lane with over, a driveway over 300 feet, so we wouldn't have any stacking on Lover's Lane. That does not impede the fact that Lover's Lane needs some serious work, and I believe the county has some discussion in its master, in its future master transportation plan.
Okay.
So.
Chief, did you have something?
Yeah, the county did request, if you, on the plan, there's a 17, it was a little less than 20-foot right-of-way that this county requested, and it's already been taken into consideration, so they're going to request 20 on one side and 20 on the other side. So whenever they develop the other side, that'll be taken, so it's already planned into that for the right-of-way to expand, they, they have a plan, a future to expand, make Lover's Lane wider all through there.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I have one question about the definition of future. Do we know what future means? Does it mean my lifetime, I'm 70?
As available.
Sounds like it. Alright, do we have any other comments or anything?
I will, if there's no further comments, I'll make a motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, Judah and David.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, okay, can we take a vote, please?
Yes, Judah Ross?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Jordan Scott?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Alright, let the record show, we voted unanimous in yes. Alright, on to Item 3F, Consider Action to Approve the EDC Industrial Park Replat of Lot 1 Conservation Area and Reserve Area D Business and Industrial Park Phase 1 Being 148.13 and 27.954 Acres of Land Situated in Stephen F. Austin Survey Abstract Number 2 and the Bastrop Town Track Survey Abstract Number 11 Out of the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park Phase 1 Within the City of Bastrop, Texas, As Shown in Attachment 1. Ms. Kennedy?
Alright, yes, sir, so you can see the location map here, it is a part of the industrial park of the EDC, and the main purpose of this replat is to remove the easement shown in red. So this easement currently would require perpetual maintenance by the EDC, and removing that, sorry, removing that easement alleviates that, that maintenance from, from them. Utilities, sorry, utilities are, will be served by the city of Bastrop, and for the traffic, there will be, this, this plat will open up a lot of connections, so that connectivity within the whole industrial park can be created, like connections towards Tahitian Village, between tracks 8 and. Um, like connections toward Tahitian Village, uh, between tracks eight and, eight and nine. And for drainage, the, the property will drain from northeast to southeast at the high level in the corner, um, down to where it levels out, and each site, as it develops, will be required to do their own drainage study and plan accordingly for drainage.
Let me clarify, let me clarify just real quick. It is not to remove the easement, but rather to include the easements in their adjacent parcels. This was at one point going to be its own tract, which would have required the EDC to perpetually maintain that. So we have an agreement with Accutronic right here, that was a ten-acre parcel. Um, to clean that up, we added this additional three, three and change to make it a thirteen-acre parcel so that Accutronic themselves could be responsible for the maintenance. This is where we anticipate the drainage um would be, so that's what this replat does.
Is this a natural gas pipeline, or?
It is, um, I believe so.
So it's utility easements, I'm not sure.
So, here we go. So we have the, oh, we have the engineer here, um, who'll be able to answer a couple more questions, if you wanna introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Yes, please uh introduce yourself and tell us who you're with.
Right. Tracy Branton with DuSet and Associates, and we're the engineer for BDC on this project. And um, the red is three natural gas pipelines, the green is an LCRA easement. Um, this plat was seen previously by P&amp;Z and approved by them, I think it was June timeframe, and uh what happened is went back and looked, there was a contract for exactly ten acres between the EDC and Accutronic. Um, the land plan had been manipulated, and the alignments of the road shifted a little bit, and then that tract was no longer ten acres, and we caught it before the plat was recorded, worked with Accutronic, um, in order to adjust their property line to make it ten acres, and in discussions uh with Ms. Corio, we also noted that the red easement there, which is the hydrocarbon pipelines, was being left as a separate tract. So we talked with the affected landowners in order to incorporate that into their tracts and thus the, the plat. So the street geometry here is unchanged from what the P&amp;Z previously approved. The only thing that's been done is, and if I can, if this will point properly.
The top one, the top button, yeah.
Yeah. Um, this tract in here in the middle, the dividing line between it and there was adjusted to meet the uh contract requirements between BDC and Accutronic, and then that red area was added in to the tracts that adjoin it.
So who is funding the maintenance? Who's paying for the maintenance?
Um, for the, the, the easement area has been added into the adjoining tracks, so those property owners are responsible for, and really the maintenance just comes down to mowing it.
Okay.
Um, so it's now the responsibility of, uh, and on this part right up here, if I can get the right button, uh, this is the Moca Ventures property, so that's been added in that tract. This has been added in the Accutronics tract. This property, parcel down here is actually a, a detention pond that will address the drainage for the majority of the remainder of the park. This part of the easement has been added into that lot. Um, my understanding from Angela at the EDC is the plan is for the uh Property Owners Association to take over the maintenance of this existing detention pond and, and this one, once the park is finished out.
Okay. Um, and who's being, who's gonna hold these businesses accountable for taking care of everything?
So that's gonna be? Um, that'll be a function of code enforcement, since they're in the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other comments, questions?
Uh, if there's no further comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have Judah and Pete. All right, come get a vote, please.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
And Patrice, oh, I already said that. Gary Moss.
Yes.
All right, that, we have a unanimous vote on that. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. All right, uh, on to item four, updates. For A.
Um, first, I will let you know that um Commissioner Schiff has resigned his chair effective immediately. Um, that happened maybe a day or so.
Okay.
Ago. Um, he is assisting the uh food pantry with uh their building and design, and as a uh public official cannot represent others, and so um he resigned his position. So hate to see him go, but happy he'll be helping the food pantry.
Yes, exactly.
Mm-hmm. Um, future development-related items, we continue to, and I don't know what's on this slide, um, we continue to face astronomical growth. We have development on Hoffman, we have development on ninety-five, we have development behind Buc-E's, we have development that you saw at Valverde, we have development to the south of Valverde, additional hotels, I mean, ah, we, it's, it's, it's a bit crazy. Um, and we continue to struggle through the wastewater treatment plant, making sure that it's online. It is now a year, and, gosh, when I got here, it was three months overdue. It is now fourteen or fifteen months overdue, and we continue to work with legal and the contractor and the engineer to resolve that. Um, our water seems to be knock wood uh on pace, but all of our master plans are outdated, and so it's very difficult to engineer on the fly when you're trying to work through um a fifty-thousand-foot view as opposed to just addressing that immediate need. So staff continues to, to muddle through it. Um, the interest rates have not, uh, we have not seen a major slowdown in pre-applications and the amount of plats that are coming in. Granted, some of these plats were here uh a few years ago, and it takes a while to get through the process, but uh they're, they're still planning to blow and go, so. Staff's done a wonderful job in keeping up. Uh, the transportation impact fee, as I mentioned, uh, was uh approved on its first reading with some modification, and we expect that to be in place in the January timeframe. So if council gives a one-year, uh, as per the statute, January twenty-twenty-five, we'll see that first sixty-five percent um tranche uh per building permit begin, and the council continues to wrestle with the uh transportation master plan. Um, as we, as the election for the EDC went through, and we continue to address existing streets, so the impact fee is to address future streets, the um sales tax to address existing streets, and we continue to struggle with a drainage master plan. So all large numbers over a hundred million in each one of those numbers, so trying to do the best that we can to keep pressures down on the rates all the way around. Any specific questions on anything that you see out there?
The only question I have, I know you're busy, uh, so maybe we need to postpone the idea of the rodeos, but I would really like to have some idea when we might have additional rodeos on the B-three code.
Yes, so that.
That would be either the weekend or after hours.
That is scheduled, mm-hmm, it's scheduled for January twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh, it's a Saturday.
Okay. Well, we, we might, does anybody, did everybody else know that?
It, we had it planned for December seventeenth, I believe, but we only had seven people sign up, so we canceled the December and moved it to January, and you should see the social media push after the Christmas holiday gets out. And we will not have a limit, since we're gonna have it at the convention center, there won't be the hundred-person limit that we had at the hotel.
Great, and if you could let everybody know on the commission when the next one would be, that would be great, so I can be sure and get it on my calendar.
Okay, January twenty-seventh, nine o'clock. Okay.
All right, does anyone else have anything?
I'll let you hear from the, I'll let you hear from Doc Cowie.
So, James Cowie, building official, again, basically as Sivia said, from the mile high, all these new developments and stuff you've seen tonight, Pearl River, the compartment complexes, pouring foundations will probably go vertical. Y'all've got this report here and this basic number of permits. As Sivia stated, when these new developers come in, we expect them to be applying for ten houses or so a month. Lennar is pretty well doing it in their existing subdivision, and they're running out of lots quick so far. Single-family existing inventory's been used up pretty quick, and again, that's why you see the push for these new lots to have new inventory for future houses. Is there any particular, I'm not gonna go into details on all these numbers, a particular question on any specific item, that's, that's the big ticket, is this, as again, Sivia said, and once these lots come on board, you wanna see a big push for, again, ten to twenty permits a week on new single-family. And again, Valverde, six-hundred apartments of, hold apartments behind Wendy's, it's kind of getting off dead center behind the little Pecan Park, if you remember, they're trying to get that one going. Uh, the hotel there at Bullhead behind Lennar Homes, that hotel's under construction as we speak, so the stuff we were working together on getting approved is now coming out of the ground. Any, do you see any questions?
Do we know what hotel it is, or is the city able to?
The one, Fred, do you remember, the one behind, the new one, it's called, somebody help me. The courtyard, Marriott Courtyard, yeah, yeah.
Are we moving on up?
Mm-hmm.
Go have that slammin' breakfast in the morning.
Yeah, everybody wants to be in Bastrop.
I have one question, and this is probably a stupid question.
Never is.
But the lights at Hassler and Childers, are they, is there anything that could be done about those lights? Because the traffic backs up a, a lot at those lights. I don't know if anybody tries to get in and out of there in the morning and the evening, but with McDonald's and their wonderful.
So I'm assuming they're Tech Dot lights, and we'll, we'll get with Tech Dot, and 'cause I go through it all the time, and it's just the timing, but it's this weird intersection where they, it's hard to time them other than what they do. You've gotta sit for all four different movements, and sometimes that's just the nature of the beast.
So you're gonna get?
We'll get with Tech Dot.
That'd be great. Having lived there and having to deal with it on a daily basis, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta take the roundabouts to get around and go out of the way.
Yeah, I go out Walgreens.
I remember when it used to be a stop sign to get across.
You couldn't do that today. Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners, particular items to be listed on future agendas.
Um, I have a general request, and I appreciate the, the update on the uh transportation impact fee. I, I would just have requested anything that, um, like we vote on or recommend to council, if action was taken on it by council, um, if in the following meeting, I, I think we often do, but if we can just make sure it's a, a set thing that we are updated on that, what they did, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and add that.
Thank you, Judah. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say thank you to the staff and happy holidays.
Yes, thank y'all for all your hard work.
Thank y'all for all of y'all, your hard work. We appreciate, we, we couldn't do this without you. We greatly appreciate y'all.
All right, anyone else have anything?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Y'all have a good night, Bastrop.
No opposition with this one?
And a happy holidays.
Yes, sir.